Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 11th. This is the regularly scheduled board meeting in the Rhinebeck Central School District. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 28th through 18th, 2018 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I think we had a couple of edits, but all have been made.
They've already been made.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous except Liz. That motion passes. We have a moment for public comment, but seeing no public, we'll move on to reports and discussions, and we'll start with Vance.
I took this. So we went over from the last year's budget. First, we looked at was the cafeteria report. Initially, we thought the cafeteria was going to be in good shape, but after doing the final inventory and looking over the negative balances that have to be flattened out at the end of the year, we have a deficit of 13,000, which had to have a budget transfer to cover it. We also had the largest amount of unpaid lunches, which is about $2,100. So it was about $300 or $400 higher than previous years. On a positive note, Pine Plains is now participating in our shared services with Redhook for Larry's position, so that should help. Next, we looked at the trial balances between 2017 and 18. Looks like the district is in a little bit better fiscal condition, overriding the tax cap and saving some of that money definitely helped. Running that class and forming the 611 class on campus also helped save some money. We have about a $400,000 part going into the fund balance, which gives us about a 2.5% fund balance, which is still below the desired 4% amount. Some other things, just due to D-HIC payments and timing, that looks a little funky, but it's kind of the way things work due to a difference in accounting, the way that New York State wanted us to account for things. Tom's going to try to see if he can get that fixed, so it doesn't look so funky. I did want to give some praises to Tom and Christina Coley for looking at interest rates between banks, and we got a $11,000 increase in interest payments this year or last year due to the way the rates changed over the course, so that's a nice positive. It's great. Some concerns is, you know, employee benefits. We pay out for unpaid vacation time and stuff, and that's kind of funding down. We need to figure out a schedule and timing to boost that up a little bit. Tom's going to look at kind of historic numbers and give us a recommendation for when we need to start funding that again. And then some special education litigations, which may come into our lap that are not budgeted for and may cause some issues. Our next meeting is October 10.
Okay. Do I have?
I do. I think I know the answer to this, but Tom, with these, the lunch balances that are unpaid, does your office reach out to those families to make sure if they need assistance or apply for?
That was the balances of June 30th, and we have collected, and I don't know how much money, but I know we've collected some of those because we send bills out immediately afterwards. And a part of the new policy we did on cafeteria meal charges, that is one of the requirements, is to reach out to the families to see if and what we can do for them.
Right.
We still have a little bit of money left over from an anonymous donation that we're applying to people who are free or reduced and are unable to pay back their balances. So we're using it for that purpose and that purpose only. We're the ones that seem to be in the most desperate need at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, contacting those people throughout the school year is a regular part of the process.
Oh, yeah.
You don't just wait till the summertime to do that.
Oh, no, no. They're continually throughout the year. And one of the things that was mentioned in here, and that is in the report, is Pine Plains has joined us and Redhook as far as the cafeteria program is concerned, and because of this, they had to hire an additional half-time clerical person. And that is one of the jobs that clerical person will do for us, is to contact those parents, too. On top of our social workers also doing the same thing. The person from Redhook will do the immediate thing, but if it's a persistent thing, then that will be sent to our social workers to work with the family.
Does anybody else have questions? Tom, can you tell us a little bit more about the structure of the Pine Plains-Redhook-Rhinebeck arrangement and what benefit that will bring for us and structurally how that will change?
Well, I don't know if it won't bring any additional benefit to us per se, other than we are going to be picking up some more clerical help. That will help out in many levels to be able to reach out first initially by them. Instead of Larry reaching out, his administrative assistant will reach out and do those types of things to free Larry up just to concentrate on making the three districts work. They're all using a similar menu, so there isn't too much of that. I think one of the biggest things is we probably won't see Larry as much as we used But I think this can all work. I think we've got a pretty talented crew now. Unfortunately, we did lose one person. That was a vital cog, but the person who's come into that place has taken over. That person had some prior experience working for us, so that wasn't so difficult. It did reduce our cost a little bit, but like I said, he had to hire another half-time person, which, but it will give us some clerical support we really never had before.
Will we have better buying power if we're combining three different schools in terms of purchasing?
Well, I'm sure we do get better buying power that way. The last bid that did go out was just the two of us, just us, Redhook and Rhinebeck at the time.
So you haven't done a three-way bid yet?
No, we have not done a three-way bid. In fact, that's one of the issues that Dutchess County is having right now, is I'm very glad that Larry went out and did a bid for us, because the Dutchess County bid, from my understanding, is through the roof. And there's a lot of, school districts are pulling back and requesting that they rebid everything. Or they're going to look the piggyback off of ours, because the prices they got were 20% higher than what we are getting. So there was significant increases to the other school districts.
So that's been a benefit, and that's off to us already.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No doubt about it. Larry is very, it started with Dover. Dover used to do the bidding all the time for us, the northern counties, and once the Dover person retired, Larry basically has taken over for Redhook and Rhinebeck. But we get a lot better prices than what Dutchess County does and that. He works very closely with the bidders to know exactly what we're looking for and quantities and that. So we've compared to the bid that Dutchess County has right now, we're in a lot better shape, a lot better shape. I think the only thing that really creates a little bit of an issue is milk, because we use Hudson Valley Fresh. Redhook does not. They don't want to pay the extra. So question was, we weren't sure what Pine Plains was going to do. We're hoping if Pine Plains went with Hudson Valley Fresh, it would lower our cost, but we don't know that yet, but we hope in the future that it will be a benefit to us also.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Can I also mention before we get off this topic, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Steve had mentioned accurately that our deficit was about $13,000. We used to run a deficit of around $78,000. So I mean, it's been lowered significantly, and we were looking at this towards the end of last year. We were thinking we might finally break even. So that's the difference. We didn't accommodate for the...
Ending inventory.
The inventory, so that was the difference. But I mean, it's still a lot better than we've been, that we had been doing historically, so I don't want to paint it with a totally negative brush, and we're still doing well. We'll continue to work on ways to do better, but it's not the lost leader like it used to be only a few years ago.
Looking at the school lunch fund statement, I noticed kind of a roller coaster from month to month.
Oh, yeah.
Is that typical? Do we have any idea, I mean, other than snow days and vacations and partial, you know, chipping in September or partial, but?
I mean, typically, day to day, it doesn't really change. It does matter the number of serving days within a month on the revenue side. So like in December, there's only going to be three weeks. And when you get to June, I mean, high school's got one week, middle school's got two weeks, you know, so.
Yeah.
But if you're looking at the expenditure side, there is an add to that. Let me tell you what the big one that kind of usually throws it off, and that's the bill that we get from Redhook. Sometimes they give it to us advance, and sometimes they're two or three months behind. So that could play havoc on the expenditure side. And also, the other big thing is purchases for food are usually uploaded in the front. So typically, like right now, I think we ended the year with about, I'm going to say, $11,000 worth of goods in our, throughout the district. I bet you right now, if I sat there and did a calculation, we probably got $25,000 worth of food. So you do buy, purchase upfront quite a bit, and throughout the year, you use it off. I mean, he doesn't purchase everything upfront, but usually in December and August, that he'll buy as much as he can as far as trays, spoons, all those type of things, get everything stocked. He doesn't have to worry about it for a few months, and then maybe in December, he puts another order in. So there's a little bit of that type of a thing. We don't, you know, we don't, let's see, expense like meal by meal. You can't look at a month just by itself. Very difficult. Payroll lacks behind by two weeks. No, actually, it's just one week. So there are, there are some times, it doesn't usually match up, so it's very hard to tell. Really, basically, look at last year to see how you're doing. I think, I don't, in looking at the program, it's really about participation. How's our participation doing? Is our participation staying up? If our participation stays where it is, we should fall in the same. But if you see participation drop, then you expect, of course, everything else to drop. And that's something, you know, when we look at enrollment, we're down a little bit from last year. What, how does that affect the school? Because if you think about it, the only thing you're saving in the cafeteria program is the cost of food. We still have the same number of people, working the same hours. That hasn't changed, and we can't change it just because there's 30 less kids in our schools. You know, you just can't do that. But it's something that the finance committee looks at at least every other month to make sure everything stays and, you know, isn't falling out of line.
Last year, we had a refrigerator unit that had a fever pole, so there's always going to be costs unexpected.
Yeah, that was about a $4,000 cost. Yeah. So far.
Okay. Well, we can move on to curriculum. That's next.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So we spent most of the time talking about the summer work overview. However, big caveat, there was a power failure in the district immediately prior to the meeting, so Marvin cannot have his computer or printouts or anything, so it was all going on memory. So it was, we were talking in broader strokes, and also, he is at the stage of reviewing the draft summary form, so he doesn't have final versions of everything yet. Once he gets those, he'll report back to the committee. But most of the summer projects were completed, not all of them. Occasionally, proposed curriculum projects are not conducted or do not involve all the staff who were part of the proposal, and that was the case for a few things this summer. Joe and Marvin discussed how successful it was to have curriculum, some curriculum projects completed remotely rather than in the school buildings. Marvin entertainingly said, "As a bureaucrat, what do you do? Create form." So he created form and a check-in process for those who wish to work off-site and was surprised and impressed with the quality and quantity of the resulting efforts. And he's now receiving much more detailed content and just much more content from the teachers who worked off-site than he typically gets from those who conduct summer work onsite. A few highlights from the summer work. All the projects in EMS and RHS involving Canvas were done. There was an updating to the high school health curriculum, which had been a long time since it had been reviewed and updated. So this summer, the district hired an external consultant, who is a health professional, to work on a new approach with the relevant staff, focusing on skills, functional knowledge, and awareness to make healthier decisions. That work is ongoing, but the new curriculum is being implemented this year. Also, Big Ideas Math has been fully deployed in CLS, and work is underway on Second Step and The Great Body Shop, both of which will be implemented this year. Other curriculum projects to be undertaken in this school year: solidifying Big Ideas Math, embarking on reworking the social studies curriculum, incorporating the new accountability regime related to federal ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act requirements, exploring long-distance learning opportunities, completing full tech integration K through 12, and reviewing how the district is serving our most advanced learners. Our next meeting is October 4th.
Any questions?
I just want to mention, in terms of the off-site curriculum work, we started that last summer on a pilot basis, just a handful of projects that Marvin, our administrators, could really follow and assess. And it was kind of a lead-up to our thinking that this year, our buildings would be pretty much closed to summer work due to the capital project work that, as we all know, wasn't able to be started this summer due to state education department's rather tardy approval of our process. But we went forward and expanded that online, online learning, curriculum writing, where teachers are collaborating in real time, online, and sharing, and principals and Marvin can go in and see what work they're doing and what they're accomplishing. So it having been such a successful endeavor last summer and this summer on a much larger scale, we feel we'll be in pretty good shape next summer and the summer after, when we are under pretty full construction. There won't really be another way to do it, but it's worked so well that we're enthusiastic about it, and I think we're feeling like even when we're not under construction, this is, seems like it's been a pretty successful way to get that work done, to monitor that work, to produce the quality and quantity of the work that's produced. So it's been a home run.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it.
Move on to personnel, which is going to have to be discussed in executive session. We have updates about negotiations.
Yep.
So we will move on to long-range plan.
That's me again.
The chat pops.
So we talked about the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting that's coming up in September. Steve Jetson created a platform called Microsoft Teams, which is like Dropbox and other types of online access, which we could put all the documents that the teams requested on there, and we put them into different categories, so it's easier to find and look at. There's also the ability to comment and start discussions on each document level, which I think will be helpful in streamlining conversations. We're supposed to meet with Haldane. We're still trying to work out a day and time for that.
Days are 25th.
Days are 25th. Working on that time. Keep the whole day open to you.
It's in the afternoon.
It's got to be in the afternoon.
They developed a long-range plan that was looking at students of, in the 2020 graduation year, what would that look like? What should we be teaching them now to prepare them for that? So we're hoping to get some information from them when we meet on the, I forgot, was it 25th? 25th. So that's the next step, is meeting with the principal from Haldane and getting that going. And then we also talked a while ago about putting the Budget 101 from Rye on the Rhinebeck website. And I don't know if you looked at the Haldane budget, it was very good as well, had a lot of commentary about what they're looking at and why numbers look the way they do, which I thought was a nice thing. Maybe we can look at, maybe try and incorporate some of that in just a spreadsheet. Our next meeting is tomorrow, 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m. All right, Mary. All right. All right. Any questions for long-range plan? So we'll move on to the 2018 MSBA proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions. Did everybody?
I did not have a chance to look at.
You didn't? Okay. Did anybody have a chance? Okay. No? All right.
Well, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I will put that on the agenda as a running agenda item. If there's nothing to discuss, then there's nothing to discuss. But if I don't put it on there, all of a sudden, the conference will be here, and we'll not have discussed anything if we want to. So it'll just be a rolling agenda item.
Okay.
No problem.
Do we want to wait to talk about Goal 3 until we have discussion on the action item?
That's up to you guys.
Or do we want to?
Why don't we talk about it now?
Whatever you wish.
Since we have no other?
Yeah, we'd be moving into the next phase anyway.
Yeah. If everybody's agreeable, okay.
It's in your packets.
6.3.
Yeah, Revision 1 was at your places tonight.
It has benchmarks that I think are achievable, which is important, but I think it's flexible enough so that we can, we as a board and the people who are working on it can develop what those benchmarks check.
Yeah.
And we don't have to decide that at the outset.
And as a board, you're not developing the plan.
Right.
That came up last time as a question or concern about the board's job to develop a plan. We'll be doing that in-house with our own PPS staff.
The professionals who actually know what they're doing.
Yes, and Emily will be taking a leading role on doing that. It's kind of already started.
That's fantastic. Does anybody have any questions about the language as it is now?
No.
Good for everybody? Yeah? Okay. And I think we're ready to move forward.
Ready to move.
Excellent. Okay. We're ready to move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news?
School started?
Yeah.
Steeped up yet?
Everything quiet and no issue, no negative issues. I mean, that's the ways that...
Oh, I'd be lying if I agreed to that. There's always negative issues, but in the grand scheme of things, it's been a very, it's been a very smooth opening. A literal handful of very minor bus issues, which you always have. There's never a year when there isn't a glitch or two or three here and there, but Bonnie Land, Tom and I have been checking the buses out for the last several days, and they're running pretty much on time. And we had a few sub-drivers, sub-drivers the first day, so that was one of the results of a few glitches, but, you know, the regular drivers are back. And yeah, it's, and I want to put a focus just on the transportation piece, because a lot of other good stuff to start the school year has been happening. New curriculum being implemented over at the elementary school, which has already been addressed in the curriculum minutes. So it's been, knock on wood, it's been a, I think really the biggest issue, if you could say there was a big issue, was the heat.
Yeah.
And we maintained our kids in school. We canceled after-school activities a couple of those afternoons, in part because there's a state heat humidity index threshold by which we really don't have a choice but to cancel those. And again, that was the biggest issue, and by Friday, it was 54 degrees, and we weren't dealing with that problem. So it's been a good, been a good start.
Come on, get your sweaters.
Been a good start, yeah. So thank you for asking.
Yes.
I think it's good news all our campuses. We have the new security, the getting into the buildings, the swipe cards and cameras, so I think that's good news.
Okay.
It's staff that was concerned about that, so it's nice that that was done this summer.
Kind of on that topic, I'll mention, I talked with Sue McCormick, our tax collector today, and I asked her if she had noticed less foot traffic through the building for people paying their taxes in the district office, and she said, "It's been noticeably less." I mean, we didn't eliminate it. We knew by law, we couldn't completely eliminate it, but she said there had been a lot fewer people than in past years coming in, and most of them are coming in through the side door with a little push button and a camera. That's been a good, knock on wood, so far, that's been a good, it's had the desired result.
Great.
And I think it's important to note for that, that was done, in case there's anyone listening that doesn't know, that was done for security reasons as well, so.
Yes.
Not that we don't appreciate our community, but so we don't have strangers kind of walking through the building.
Yeah, and we all said, to be fair, in addition to that, it also provides our tax-paying public with more options. For example, not to get into a long story, but Tom and I were in the office yesterday morning, and somebody came to pay their taxes, and of course, tax collector wasn't there, school was closed. On top of that, the individual had driven up from Westchester County to pay his taxes in person, in cash. So after a little bit of discussion, he asked if there was a certain credit union in town, which there was, which he's a member of, and he said, "Well, I can just go over there and get a bank, a money order, and then take it to M&amp;T Bank." And I said, "And yes, you can," and that's the advantage for having additional options for people to pay. So his drive up from Westchester County was not in vain. He was, he's lucky he was a member of that credit union, but he was and got taken care of, so.
And he went to the bank, where they were open when we were closed.
Right.
And we're going to have that same situation next Wednesday. We will be closed here, but the bank will be open to accept any payments. Well, not any payments. Checkered money order.
Not cash.
Or cash if you're a customer.
If you're a customer.
So we like the idea that people have more options, too. Parking's a little better there. They're open longer and on days when we're not, so.
Saturday.
Yeah. That was good.
That's great. Any other good news? Okay. How about old business? Steve?
Are we set with all the speakers for the open houses?
That's one of my questions.
That's under my other.
That's your other. All right. We'll wait until...
But that's right, we can discuss it now.
Okay.
Let's just make sure we've got four people for four open houses.
Okay. I think we have three. Mark, you're doing K-2 chancellor tomorrow? Is that right?
I can.
That's right. You were the most flexible. And you, Steve, you said...
I said I could do that one or high school, I believe.
Okay.
And I can do 3-5 at chancellor.
And I'm doing middle school.
And you're doing middle school.
So that's everything.
So we got a field, yeah.
All right. Excellent.
The building principals have been waiting with bated breath to address their kids.
Just clarify, am I doing tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
I appreciate that.
You want to check your calendar before you commit?
I don't know.
I'll wait next door. I'll pick you in if...
All right. Other old business?
And an other, but not an old business.
I have some, I don't know whether they're old business or other.
Not a business, man. Throw them out there.
Well, you wanted to discuss coffee with the board and breakfast with the board.
Yeah.
And we also have these communications tips that you shared with us that...
I found from the dusty digital archives.
I was so mad when I was reading them, because I was thinking, "I think I helped edit these. I can't find them on my..." I can't find them on my computer."
Oh, I know, I know you didn't. I couldn't find them either. And yesterday, on my day off, I decided, all right, I'm just going to roll up my sleeves and just wade through lists and lists and lists and lists of files, and lo and behold, it was, yes. So I didn't have to invent the wheel, I just had to update the wheel with some social media commentary, but, so I don't know, we can start wherever you guys want. Let's, let's talk about breakfast with the board. Is there consensus on the board that there are at least several people who will, again, it depends on the date, of course, but who would be willing to attend in the morning and/or the after, the evening session?
Just to remind me what the dates are.
I have, I want to make sure the board wants to do this again.
Oh.
And if I see nodding heads, then I will set dates. I'm meeting with the administrative staff tomorrow morning, then I'll get the dates out to you, and we'll.
Yes, I think we should do it. Yeah, breakfast with the board is with the faculty.
That's, that's correct.
Yes, so that's just a morning.
Yep.
Yes.
But that's, that's, yes, that is just a morning. And the other one is.
Coffee with the board.
Our coffee with the board, which is the morning at chancellor and the evening at, typically here.
Yeah.
That's sometimes a little more difficult to get people to commit, but if you want to do it, we'll set it up. If you don't, then that's more a case of finding a time that works with you guys than it is getting a date from our administrators, because they're, they're not involved, and it's just, we are.
I, I think we should do it.
I think so, also, everybody. And we can, and communications on Thursday, we can try to nail down some general ideas about.
Yeah, I think one of the things we had talked last year was using some of the broad topics under, under our board goal to be like a centerpiece topic for this first meeting. Not try to do all of it, but to try to spread that out and say, "Okay, we're going to talk about long-range planning, or student mental health, or, you know, whatever." So, and you're right, I think that's a good place for communication to, to dig into the nuts and bolts of that. So, okay, so we'll, we'll set dates, tentative dates for that.
Excellent.
And in terms of the communication tips, I, I emailed this to you guys yesterday. I actually have copies, if you were unable to. I'm sorry, I didn't put these in here. So there are, there are actually two documents that I found. I'd actually forgotten about one of the two. The top document in that little stapled packet that I just sent around was the one that we provided to our staff. It's really, it's really more staff-centric, and there are some expectations for, for staff in communicating with, with parents. I did, just so you're aware, I passed this top document, passed the Rhine Bed Teachers' Association leadership, and got it. Enthusiastic, it's great. Go for it, so I can, and I will, if you don't have any objections, objections, roll it out tomorrow. That's my, that's my plan, is to put it out there before the open house program.
To the staff.
To the staff, yeah. The second document, which is the one that I had really forgotten about, but it was in that same digital folder, was a document that I believe we posted on our website. We may have emailed it out to, to our parents. I do want to add, probably under the, under the FAQ section, I do want to add a Q and A that addresses social media and kind of grabs the sentiment at the end of the teacher one about, you know, not adjudicating your complaints and concerns via social media to rely on person-to-person communication, to get questions answered and problems addressed as opposed to doing it in a, in a more public and perhaps less constructive way. And I'll be very judicious in the way I, I craft that language. But that's one thing I do want to add to this other, to this other, the second piece, and then I will proceed to put that on our website, email it out.
It may not be a bad idea at open houses if we address these things lightly, you know, not, we don't have to read through all of these things, but we can point people to.
I think that's a great idea.
Where they can find this kind of communication. I would point out that on this document, the last page, we still have Durham.
Oh, yeah, great catch, that shows you how old this was.
Yeah, I know.
But it's still timely, I think, so, yeah, I will, I will make that correction for sure. And again, I will make every effort, if I'm available, if I'm able to tomorrow, to start making this public. So when you mention it to parents, they won't give you their best dumb look, because a lot of these parents were probably not parents with kids in our schools when we. It was 2012, 13, that we initially put this out. So again, I try to kind of, not to preempt what you might say, but to put some information out there, so they're not totally clueless about the contents, so.
Is it worth asking the principals their opinion about having these FAQs available at open houses? I don't know that people are necessarily going to pick them up, but.
We can have some sitting down, and I don't want to make 400 copies.
Yeah.
You can only have 20 of them taken, but I'm sure we could, you know, have 50 or 100 copies sitting on the desk out in front, if you want to.
Some people like to grab lots of information for reading.
Yeah.
And where, where will we post this, on the site?
On our website?
Yeah.
I, my inclination would be to put it right on the main page.
But it won't stay there for long.
No, well, it'll stay there for as long as I want it to stay there.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I can set the date, and then if, if, you know, not to be tedious about it, but if I post it there, let's say for two months, just, then it will just go further down in the, in the, you know, in the news feed. It'll still be there. If you, and again, communications can give that some thought. If there's another repository for it after it outlives its initial push, we can put it someplace else on the website, too, so that's, that would be the least of our problems. But give it some thought between now and later this week.
Oh, I see one. Maybe we could put them on our Facebook page.
I see one thing that is definitely going to have to be changed on the FAQ.
Okay.
It's a reference to Durham bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we will definitely take care of that.
Joe, maybe we could put it on our Facebook page?
What?
Maybe we could put it on Facebook.
Well, what I've been, what I've been doing with the Facebook page and the Twitter feed is putting a little teaser there and then redirecting them to the main page on our website, because we can't put that much on, I mean, you guys just could, but.
Especially that social media piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. You betcha. So we will, we will do that, and I will try to do that as well, actually. Okay?
Yes.
I think those are, those are the things you had.
That is all I have.
And I think that also may have taken care of.
Consent agenda. You've got, you've got the press. Okay. We still have, we still have no public, public comment. And I think we've gone through all the others?
Yeah, all the ones that I have.
Okay, then we can move on to our action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, then may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2017-18 budget transfers in accordance with Board of Education Policy Number 6150 for the school year ending June 30th, 2018, see attached?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's 2018-19 goals for the school district?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Joe, for putting together that last word for us.
No problem.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into, to executive session for the purposes of speaking of negotiations with one of our bargaining units?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we're moving into executive session. Thank you, everybody.